Good evening. Clock on the wall says seven o'clock. Something to call this meeting to order. And this evening, we have Ryan Deasy, Bud Dykner, myself, Ben Filbrick, Carrie Delkey as an alternate, Lynn Conway as a sitting member, Marge Salinger as an alternate, and tonight, Andy Meek will be taking the place of Chuck Sheen, who is under the weather. I guess we move to the election of officers, which I haven't quite focused on this evening.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the current slave officers to keep their same positions.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second on that? More discussion, let's say, is a discussion. Is there someone in this line? Feel free, Fred.
I feel silly, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Minutes. We have two minutes, one for a meeting and one for our rewrite online meeting. The first one is number 1710 from November 1st.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for 1710 for November 1st. That's written.
Second. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Fred. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now for the minutes for 1711 on 11/22/22.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for 1711, November 22nd, 2022. That's written.
Thank you, Ryan. Second. Thank you, Fred. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moving.
Yeah, I'm 6B1, Brandon and Cindy Flack. Consideration changes to the town's bonding requirements for land use development, specifically subdivision lots. Basically, it's a request to look at our subdivision regulations differently as far as how we look at erosion, sediment control bonding. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Flack here.
Thank you. Anything I can do? So my family and I are the developers of, I just did not make it sweet, of the Prairie Farm subdivision. And we've sort of known coming up to this point that we're... Can you just shut this off? Because I'm sure I'm hot enough to have it. If that don't work, it's a bitch. You better get it fixed. So we sort of always knew we were going to run up against this coming in. And we figured we crossed the bridge when we came to it and just bring it to the town's attention that in certain situations like this, it kind of creates a burden and a hardship that seems a little bit undue and maybe not in the best interest of the town itself. What we're proposing is that we have an eight-lot subdivision. But it's not a traditional subdivision with like a road going through or any public improvements. It's just eight lots that are for sale to individual homeowners. These lots will all have their own construction companies, their own construction crews, their own folks doing it. It's not going to be Cindy and I who are doing it. We're just the owners of these lots. And the town has learned of this in a couple of other instances as well. The way the stipulation is written, in order to rescue any development on any single lot, we have to put up the bond for all eight lots. And then that bond sits there until the work is completed. What we're proposing is that the bonds should be posted by us for each individual lot, but only as we're doing construction on a lot specifically addressed. The town engineer has already created the bonding amounts per lot. So it's very easy for us to compute the amount. If one construction starts on lot eight, we post a bond for lot eight. When construction's complete, basically, we have that bond here. If it was something as simple as a bond, we'd allow the bond company to do. And then we'd only pay a matter of interest on it every year. That would be relatively easy. But the town of Stonington has had bad luck with those bonds in the past and therefore doesn't accept those. So it's actually a check or a cash or a certified money order has to be put up for the entire eight lots, which could sit there for... We have some people who shouldn't buy lots for their grandkids. We have some lots that we're on, shouldn't sell or develop them for years. So we could be setting up an erosion control bond that might sit there in the town for 20 years or so and really not have the desire of protecting the open space at the time when development comes around, assuming the dollars wouldn't be settled. So what I would propose, and I think is as I've written, is that we would bond each lot individually as the applicants filed for the site permit. And that the town would be given the flexibility to adjust the level of the bonds based on the date those site permits were submitted. So 30 years from now, if somebody submitted it, it wouldn't be tied. The town wouldn't be tied today's dollars for bonding that development.
How many eight lots would you expect to be developed soon?
I'd say two, three years. Probably half of them.
Half?
Yeah. We've sold one already. Those people are interested in moving forward pretty quickly. The leads we have on some of the other lots. We did have one person saying they're a student just buying into own a place in Stonington to eventually build. And then Cindy and I have always sort of dreamed of one lot and the other will stay available for each one of our children.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Are you proposing that this is across the board or just for your subdivision?
From some clarity that we've gotten from the town attorney is that the finding zoning appeals board does have... Keep me up there with the wording here.
CBA, GBA, yeah.
Yeah, you have discretion as to how those bonds should be administered. The town has discretion. It doesn't have to be for all the lots. You guys could do it as you see fit. There's discretion of how these bonds are posted. I'm asking for our specifics of development. And you use that discretion to just post bonds on each individual lot and make life of the same lines.
And Keith, is this a regulation?
The regulation, you're in by the town attorney. The regulation, he thought was vague enough where the commission could do this. From the town's point of view, it would be precedent setting going forward. Where, you know, it would be allowed for a subdivision, but it would also be allowed for similar subdivisions that don't have roads or public improvements.
So why isn't this before the zoning board appeal?
Well, it's not breaking any rules that need variance.
So it's not...
It's more of a policy thing in how it's gone.
Do I understand it's also an administrative burden? To deal with, in this case, eight lots over a period of years?
It would be more work to do that. You know, in the staff report, we sent this issue out to different officials in town here. The zoning official, town engineer, the town attorney, and their comments are in here. The zoning official said she doesn't recommend the individual bonding. Because of that reason, the paperwork contracting of it and the possibility that things fall between the cracks over the years. The town engineer agreed with that. The town attorney basically says the commission could do it this way. There's nothing in the regulations that prevents it. It's not something you see in other towns.
This is something that's been done before in our town, correct?
Right.
Right, okay. Excuse me. If I could just address the comments by Candace and the engineer. At that point, we were requesting each individual lot on our bond with the town. And I'm not sure if it changes her responsibilities very much or duties to file this stuff. But we since have updated our request that Cindy and I would be the posters of the bonding for each lot regardless of who owns it.
So I have a question. What happens if you want to do this for future generations and you two are holding the bond and you may not be around? So therefore...
You better leave good notes.
Who's bonding what for who? Go ahead.
That's a question I have with this. Well, I totally get where this makes sense. If we're putting in a road and we're building a bunch of houses along the road, that we want to bond the entire project. But because these are going to be done in phases and it could be stretched out over years, I'm not quite sure this is the intent of how that bonding process for subdivisions is supposed to work.
What did you think of the... Did you see the town attorney's response? What do you think of that percentage?
I think that's fine. It makes sense.
Review every five years or something?
Absolutely makes sense to me. I mean, the goal is to protect the open space. We're talking about the erosion sediment control. So we're trying to protect the open space that we've created by doing this in the first place.
That's good.
Keith, do you know in the regulations how the discretion that we have is worded? Because now after the zoning rewrite meetings, the word discretion throws up a red flag with McKenzie written on it.
You know, we find this section here. It doesn't give too much detail in subdivision regulations. But it doesn't look to be one of those waivers, those problematic waivers that we can talk about.
We can do it if it improves the, you know, insert qualitatively script word here.
Right, yeah. It doesn't appear to be one of those cases.
I just, you know, from what I understand, Keith, what the town attorney said was that you would be setting a precedent. And I'm not sure of the people that own the board, right? Somebody could say, well, you did it for, you know, this person. Why aren't you doing it for this person? And we don't have a set, a wealth bought out, set up. Here is the criteria that would allow us to make this change. And this is how it will be administered. I mean, I'm just not sure that at this time there's been enough thought over the long term what that kind of change would entail or if it makes sense. If it was one lot and somebody just said, okay, you know, in this instance, this is what we're doing, and we therefore would not have to justify not doing it for the next person who comes along, then maybe that's a little bit of a different discussion. But I get the sense that we would then be kind of bound to justify when we're not doing it. And we don't have any parameters here.
Chuck has some feelings on this as well. He was out tonight. And he's been around land use planning boards for quite a while also.
Yeah, to be clear, yeah, it would be a precedent setting thing for similar subdivisions, not ones with roads or big public improvements. But we have another one that was approved about a year ago. That's in the same boat, you know, a few lots along a street, no road or public improvements, and they approach the same question. So, you know, it's, for better or for worse, there would be another subdivision owner out there who would like to do the same thing.
And then let me ask you one other good question. Sorry, Fred. So what I understand, there's another way to do bonding that would be acceptable to you. But the town has said, we don't like that because that hasn't worked out for us in the past. Isn't that another avenue that should be pursued? Why exactly are we not allowing people to do it this other way? And can that be changed?
That would take an actual regulation amendment because the subdivision regulations specify the type of payment. I guess the town has had bad experiences with those sort of insurance company surety bonds before and collecting the money. So years ago, both the zoning and the subdivision regulations were amended to say we only accept letters of credit or a certified check because the other ways were too problematic.
Do you think there's a legitimate basis for distinguishing between subdivisions of this sort, which doesn't involve roads or something? Is that a reasonable basis for making a distinction going forward?
It might be because of the unique way it is. You know, it's tough to say too, because there are other subdivisions that would look the same on paper, but would be done by a developer who wants to come in, build all eight houses at once. In which case, it would make sense for them to pay one big erosion sedimentation control bond upfront. But it's almost like the developers intent is the defining thing.
If we were to approve tonight, we'd be basically be opening that door, at least the way it's described here in this application.
Right.
Saying anybody who already has it or is looking to do this before it and say, I want to get the same exception. And it seems to me a bit like Pandora's box. We don't have it clearly defined, so you open that door pretty wide.
I think it needs more time to sort out. That tow brother's development, October 27th took years.
Right.
And that was, I don't know how many buildings they put up there.
Yeah, it's a good 40.
Yeah, but you want to be coping with that sort of thing over decades.
Yeah, and that one did have, you know, roads and a big drainage basin and things.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But yeah, some subdivisions do take a long time.
Can I ask another question, Keith? Is this something possibly that we could table to have a little more analysis done? You know, maybe on wording or specificity of how it's defined?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that makes sense. I don't want to out of hand deny it, but right now, when it's presented, I get the feeling we don't have enough information to make a good decision.
That would do it.
I would agree that maybe if the town attorney... Come up with that set of parameters in which this is acceptable.
Differentiates between the different departments.
Right, but have a chance to have town staff look at it.
Yeah.
And also get buy-in from the other portions of, you know, the other departments that they too can live with these kinds of changes from the industry and still.
I do think there's an advantage to looking further into it to make sure that smaller enterprises can do this sort of thing and not just leave it people with that size for large amounts of capital.
Fred, do you have that? I guess I'd like to know whether Londerman thinks there's a reasonable basis for distinguishing between the types of developments. This, I guess, in this case involves tying up something like $74,000 and change over some unknown period of time. That's a lot of money, but it's not the end of the world. And I'm not sure we should change the regulations to that degree. Okay, so I guess it'd be a question of whether we can find a reasonable basis for distinguishing between types of developments that would require full bonding and those that would require serial bond. Faced in or teared or tell me you want to face it.
Yeah, so like that. The way the wording from the student attorney, the way the wording is right now is it's totally up to the finding zoning board. If they're discretion, whether these bonds are going to be posted or not. From what I understand from the way the lawyer has written it, you guys have a word put all the way of the reason to even post a bond in this case, he thought there was no sediment issue to be made. What you're proposing is you'd rather put something specifically into writing that would limit your discretion more and make it so if there were individual lots that were being done without any roads or developments, we would absolutely be allowed to always do it this way. Or it has to be done the way it's written as one developer doing all the lots at the time.
Right. Yeah.
And I do think that just to, you know, manage expectations, I don't think this is something that we would be able to find adequately, get the input, et cetera, et cetera, in the next 60 days or so. I mean, I'm thinking we're rewriting regs. We're doing a lot of things right now. So I just want to manage that expectation that, you know, it's something that seems reasonable to look into, but not to commit that this would be signed, sealed, and delivered even for deliberation back to the board.
I would just start, I'll start somewhere, is that subdivision not have any public improvements in it to be considered for this discretion. And then Keith, with that, you know, and in light of things, eliminate 90% of the people I would even ask in the developer world. You know, this is really more meant for people that take their farms, put it up into three pieces of property, and want to sell one lot next year, but don't want to sell the next two lots for a lot. I mean, I could see a lot of people in the town that this would benefit for if you were able to come up with a way of doing it. And the definition should start as no public improvement. If there's a public improvement, the developer's got to be responsible for all the lots or that developer goes to 100%. But without a no public improvement, that pretty much means it's going to be up to the individual lot owner to sort it out. I think that's a great place to start with a simple definition, not over complicated.
Yeah, that's a great idea. No, that's very good. You know, and again, I think if the town attorney had not indicated that it set a precedent, that's where, to me, those muscles start going off. Because what that means is that we would have to justify not doing it versus the opposite. And I think that puts the board in a tough, tough spot.
I'm sorry, I respect. What I don't see in the letter from Jeff Lommer and the town attorney where he says this would set a precedent, it just spells out that it's discretionary every time that bond and bonds gets posted. It always is.
I think Keith indicated that it was set a precedent.
Yeah, I think we have to have some sort of policy for whether we would do this or whether we would not do this.
I guess I'd be in favor of tableing this from now. I'd like to get Chuck Sheen's input on it as well. Maybe revisit it with the lawyer, Keith, and other...
Yeah.
In a split, says maybe other departments need to be consulted? I don't know. I don't think so, but I don't know if...
Yeah, you know, if it's something we want to do, we'd probably get more input from different departments and the town engineer.
Is that a motion that we would need to make to do that, to table?
Oh, no, really, we wouldn't.
So we'll take it under consideration, I guess, is the answer for this evening.
I guess the next question is, you know, does this appear on the next agenda or to discuss, or when will this be discussed again?
Two weeks from now is going to be kind of busy. So I would say maybe the first meeting in January, we could revisit it. I don't think that meeting has much of it at the moment.
No, not at all.
Right.
Okay.
Now we'll give time for Chuck to review tonight's input and the attorney to... You and the attorney have come up with some more, more specifics.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
But I would like it to see it laid out pretty clearly. And if McKenzie would be part of that, rewriting the reg, that would not come into phase one.
No, it has nothing to do with the, to my opinion, it's wrong. It could eventually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is all...
I just want to be a bit transparent.
Right. It's not a discussion that we're not... We're not trying to change regs right now. It was, I guess, respond to... If we're both were called on this, we would include in it why we're voting that.
Right.
So that precedent set, it's easy to say how could happen situation.
Yeah, and this is all subdivision regulations, house zoning regulations?
Carrie, do you have anything?
No, I think the precedent scares me. Pandora's box.
Marge? Question for Francisco.
Yeah, I think it's a good one.
Whatever he's saying. Yeah, so we need to scratch our heads a little further.
Understood.
Thank you. Number 6B2, a vote on increase in compensation for the Department of Planting Commission's minutes favor. The goal here is to bring up the amount to the same rate as other boards are paying, up to $125 per meeting. Finance director requesting that all three land use boards vote on this increase.
Oh, yeah, we never...
Yeah.
I think the vote by... This is for...
So is it a budget? Is it budget, a town budget allocation?
The money comes out of the department's budget. It's not even specifically to the commission's budget, but it's something that he thought the commission needed to do here is to vote on.
And you said to other commissions, two others have to vote on it as well?
Yeah, I know eleven's commission already has, and I think like even just only one of the deals left.
$25, $25, I made.
Yeah.
$100.
$100.
That's done.
I don't think, it's not $25.
$125.
Yeah.
So what, I mean, again, Keith, just asking, because I don't know. How often does this increase, how often do they take place? And what's the criteria? How does it work?
For as long as I can remember, it's been 100 per meeting. But it was recommended that we go up to 125 because that's what some of the other boards in town are doing with their minute takers, just to be able to find someone to do it.
So I guess the increase is $25, right?
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve to the rate $125 is proposed.
Second. Thank you. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And 5D administrative review items, excuse me, 6D1, 22279ZON, Thomas H. Walter. Zoning permit application for change of use from personal services to retail vape shop and associated sign, property located at 145 Liberty Street, Marketuck. Assessors map 16 lot 12, lot 1A, zone LS5. This is just a change of use for a portion of an existing building from a tattoo studio to a retail vape shop. It's the building that also has a podiatrist's office on Liberty Street. They're going to reuse the detached sign that's already there. It meets the bulk and use requirements of the LS5 district and the parking requirements there. And the podiatrist's office and the vape shop will likely have opposite peak times here. Checking state law, there doesn't seem to be any distance requirement from the school, West Vine Street around the corner.
That was my question, there's no.
No, no.
Okay. Does that school camp be that far away, is it?
No, it's not that far away, especially as the crow flies.
Okay. Do we have any limit on vape shops? It seems to me we have one on every corridor.
No, I mean, there's no real limit then.
Yeah.
Just like most retail things. And looking it up, you know, I found a reference that local governments aren't allowed to regulate vaping more stringently than the state does. And I think that applies to just wherever you can smoke and the retail aspect of it.
Any other questions, Rickie? Any other motion?
Make a motion to approve the application estimate.
Second, Ryan. Your second? My second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say, as we did with the last vape shop, I think we should consider how many tobacco and vape shops.
I think the state said, are we not allowed to regulate that? Or the state...
That's my understanding of it, just from seeing it.
You think there'd be a saturation point, so two...
Well, we've got three that are working on opening up at the same time. They may not know about each other.
Right, that's what I mean. It may be survival of the fittest.
Is something you could go to the town attorney and ask him?
Yeah, if something the commission's interested in here.
Well, I think maybe it's something we could look at, as we're doing the zoning reassignment, that's something, and maybe it's different. This question, is that something?
At the moment, we have a quote on the table. Yeah, but it is kind of interesting. As Amy says, we seem to, it seemed to be spread everywhere. I don't know, I don't even know whether that's a bad thing, it just seems to me all of a sudden, we're dealing with it. I don't know. All those in favor? I oppose.
I have a rap to oppose.
Plan 6D2, a PZ2003CC SPA and CAM, Mystic Seaport. Request for modification to rear deck wall material for previously approved applications for a three-story restaurant, boutique hotel, and accessory structures, property located at 75 Freeman Black Mystic, assessors map 173, block 1, lot 1, zone NHD.
We had a promise that they wouldn't be back. Sorry.
Very welcome. Very welcome. I greatly apologize for the inconvenience for a very minor change, but we're here to admit, partly just because of the zone that we're in and basically the aging that we make, we have to come back and let you know and ask for permission. So today's change, I think it's very simple, it's just simply a material change on the facade of the deck that wraps around the pool on the riverside of the hotel. So, and we brought the elevations for you, both what was the approved design and what we're proposing. And basically, there was a wrap, the last change had a wood deck around the pool, but the veneer, the facade of that deck was a stone wall. And as they've gotten into the design of floodwaters being able to pass through, that wall has become a bathtub, it's become very difficult, but since they've realized that it needs to be basically built like a deck instead of a stone wall on the deck on top of it, it just needs to be wood framed, and we need to have a wood facade on it. So the upper porch underneath, you know, the deck underneath the porch already has a wood facade to it, just horizontal wood cladding, just similar to the Thompson deck right next door. So what we're proposing is that where we had stone on that little, what looked like a retaining wall of the deck, now it'll just be the wood facade, that same horizontal banding. And that's what it looks like, so the riverside view, and then this is the south elevation and the north elevation, as you see it from either end, again, going from what was looking like a stone wall to now the edge of the wood deck.
So floodwaters would go through until it gets to...
Until it gets to the building.
Gets to the pool.
Yeah, just be able to pass through.
Did the stone, the original stone, did that have a structural feature to it, a facet to it?
So, because of the iterations, unfortunately, originally it was a stone wall with a stone patio. And then because of fill requirements and some structural stuff, we got into the wood deck, and then the stone wall, and now they realize it just should be a simple wood deck, just like a lot of the other restaurants around here, as you go out to the, kind of the deck to have...
So, Amy, the next question, it's not log wear, is it? It's a decker, is that what?
It's a decker, completely decker. Yes, not log wearing at all. Yeah, we don't need it from a structural perspective, the whole deck is held up by the piers underneath it. It's just literally the window dressing, if you will.
So it is window dressing to probably what's going to be, yeah, a major change to the river bank view, and of something, you know, keeping it stone, you know, there's stone walls all over the place, et cetera, it's very consistent. Yeah, you're right, there are some restaurants that have decks, but they're not part of that type of vista. Yeah, there's not another alternative where you could put some kind of stone in there. I mean, I want to hear about the money part, because originally it was going to be stone patio with a stone wall. So it seems this is kind of late in the game that the engineers come and have thought about funding and water.
Well, I will, I will tell you that the structural engineer has changed from the original design to this design. That was part of the original design. The original structural engineer, we needed more information because of the flood zone, and so now there's a new structural engineer, and that's what's driving some of this change. That's the behind the scenes of what's going on, but it's, again, the aesthetic is what we're here today, is, is the wood cladding, you know, is it a significant change or is it an acceptable change from the stone veneer to the wood veneer? And that's, again, it's already on this building, the wood veneer's directly above it, so it's not a new material, it's already part of a package of design, it should extend the length of the grade, and obviously matches what's next door. I totally agree there's a lot of stone walls, and there's going to continue to be stone walls as part of this project, and that's that the veneer in the building is still going to be stone, so there'll still be plenty of stone, it's just that it's surrounded the deck itself.
Will it be varmished or any kind of treatment?
It will be sealed, I think it's oil is what the treatment's going to be. Again, very similar to what was on the Thompson building at the Seaport, that has an oil base on it just to protect it, keep it from weather.
So what do you think, it will go silver eventually?
Eventually it will silver. It should be a slower silver than if you were to just let it go right away.
Would you consider any, using any native wood instead of EPE?
The only way, I would say the only way to do native wood and allow it to look lax is to thermal trudy, right now, which is very expensive, where you actually just bake the wood. There is, there is a product out there where you literally bake it to get all the sugars out of the wood. It's very energy intensive. Obviously, it does make the wood more stable long-term than it can use it outside. Again, because there's this other material, I would recommend changing to another material as another type of cladding when we have it directly above it. That's why we wanted to just keep the same material already part of the deck and just put it on the lower shelf.
Any other questions?
Can you remind me if there are going to be any plantings in front of the...
There are a minor amount of plantings on the riverside, not a ton, there's a little bit on this side after we go past the gate. But for the most part, it's lawn and then just some ornamental grasses at the base of it. And there's a plantings around the side.
Three feet tall?
Yeah.
Grant, Ryan, Andy, for our chair.
White oak works great for boats, I'm not sure why I couldn't figure this, but I think that's outside of my scope.
It would work. I'll make a motion to approve the application, submitted.
Thank you, Ryan. Any further discussion?
Yeah, you know, I just feel as if we went through these plans a number of times.
True.
And we were very specific. And one of the concerns throughout the entire thread of discussion had to deal with the view from the river looking out at this building. And I just don't think that this is the same as what was approved. And I think there's probably a way to do it with stone, might cost you more, but that's not part of the discussion, just like using natural wood, it's going to cost you more, but that's not part of the discussion. So, you know, I, when we have spent as much time as we've had on these type of discussions previously, and looked at the design, and looked at the material, and it's a major part of the presentation, and a major reason for us to approve it, I just think this stage of game to change the material is just not, not acceptable, and I don't think it's as nice as it was. So I would deny it.
Okay, let's take a vote. Ryan?
I'll take a vote up, on table two.
Approved. Okay. Names of votes?
Deny.
Andy?
I'll approve.
Then I vote approved.
Thank you very much. So for old business, item 7A is a PZ2228, VR, earned of Construction LLC, bond release application for PZ2101 SPA and CAM, or construction of paved parking spaces adjacent to and serving the retail and residential uses at 11 Cockrell Street Mystic, assessors map 182, block 4, lot 4, zones RH10 and DP5. This is upon Lily's request for the erosion limitation control bond for the parking lot associated with the Aunt Bella's building on Cockrell Street. The site plan was approved by the commission in April of last year with stipulation for this bonding. And this construction's been done for over a year. Release of the full amount was recommended by the town engineer, no objection from the zoning official. And if I didn't mention it yet, the amount is $3,430. Really no issues with the construction of this parking lot, it's nice landscape now. So, you know, our recommendation is for release of the ENX bond.
Any questions, Keith?
Make a motion to approve the year request, submitted.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Any discussion? Hearing done? Orders in favor? Aye, it's a move.
And that's it for tonight, item 7D, a request to be tabled until at least the next meeting. Be willing to get an extension from then if we go much farther than that.
What are we lacking in that to continue?
You know, they wanted to take the divisions in the plans based upon comments from the town engineer and the fire district.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Fred. Orders in favor?